This meeting to order on ten oh three AM on December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Rick, you want to leave us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure.
All right, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Chair John Freeman.
Present.
Councilmember Rick Perez.
Made it.
And we are missing Board of Supervisor B Gonzalez.
Thank you. Can I have an acknowledgement of the posting of the agenda?
The agenda was posted on Monday, December eleventh, at ten oh five AM.
Okay. Are, Rick, you want to move to approve the minutes?
So moved.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
It's approved. Okay. We're going to go on to public comment. Integrated Waste Management encourages your participation in this meeting and welcomes your comments. Speakers are requested to state their name prior to the speaking. No more than three minutes allowed, allowed each speaker, and twenty minutes on each subject, otherwise extended or limited by the chair. A speaker's allotted time may not be deferred to another speaker. Councilmembers may question the speaker, but there is no debate or decision. Anybody, please, public comment?
No public comment.
Thank you. Okay, let me see. Okay. Staff, staff announcements is next up.
Good morning. I'd like to bring up our intern Lori Tankersley to the podium for staff announcements. Hello, everyone. Let's see. For staff announcements, our first one is that we have our staff services specialist position filled as of this month. We would like to welcome Esmeralda Gómez to our team.
Good morning. I'm Esmeralda. I've had the pleasure of working for San Benito County for eight years, and I'm excited to start as a staff services specialist with the Integrated Waste Management team. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. Awesome.
Okay. Some more general updates. We have some upcoming events before the end of this year. First, this Friday, December fifteenth, we have the Chamber of Commerce Green Committee meeting at La Catrina with environmental innovations from one PM to two PM. This Saturday, December sixteenth, we have a community cleanup at Hollister Super on San Juan Road from nine AM to twelve PM. We'll be cleaning up the surrounding areas. Also, on Saturday, December sixteenth, we have our monthly household hazardous waste collection event at John Smith Road landfill from nine AM to twelve PM. This occurs every third Saturday of the month. Lastly, on December, on Saturday, December sixteenth, we have a resilient San Benito workshop at the San Juan Batista Library from two PM to three PM. And that is of general updates.
Thank you, Lori. Next, I'd like to bring up Monica, our recycling coordinator, for some... Oh, I'm sorry. Next, I would like...
Okay. Are we finished with?
We are, we are finished with staff.
Okay, thank you. So then we'll go on to task force member announcements. Rick, do you have anything?
Um, Christmas in the park tomorrow, four o'clock. Be there, be square.
Thank you. I have two quick items. I'm going to comment on the hazardous waste event that's occurring day after tomorrow. I encourage you all to use it. I used it the last time, and I, it's not good when I go out there, okay? I have everything labeled and with the MSDS glued on it, and I get out of the truck and they start yelling at me to get back in the truck. And so I, you know, it's, it's, it's okay. They were doing their job. But I was trying to tell them I had it all figured out for them, and they didn't appreciate it. Yes, Rick?
I do have one other comment.
Okay, let me finish.
Okay. Yeah, I understand you.
And then, because I used to be in the hazardous waste recycling industry, I, I still receive updates from various companies and magazines and stuff like this. And so I learned last week that Republic Services is opening up a huge new PET recycling center in Las Vegas, Nevada, and it's supposed to take that type of plastic waste from seven western states, which, of course, includes California. So I know we do everything through Marina, and, but I'm just encouraging us to look at it and see if there's any, talk to the Marina people and see if there's anything we can do to increase our recycling of plastics through this new plant that Republic Services is opening up in Las Vegas. It's supposed to be huge. It's supposed to be state-of-the-art. They're going to take colored plastics and somehow transform it into clear flakes. It's, so anyway, that's it. Rick, you have something, yes?
I just wanted to ask, what's all the flocked Christmas trees that are going to be coming out? Is, are we planning on anything for flocked Christmas trees to be turned in, or is it just the dump? Because I know a lot of people are going flock this year, it seems like.
Yeah, the flock trees are unfortunately not compostable, so those would go to the landfill for disposal, but through Recology, and I don't know if we can bring up maybe a representative from Recology to speak about the curbside program, but residents are able to continue to put their Christmas tree at the curb. I believe a postcard was mailed out with a bit of that information, and more will be shared via social media for our distribute, from our distribution contact list. There are requests from Recology of how it should be set out, so I'll let Mike share a little bit more about that.
Good morning. I'm Mike Kelly. I'm the general manager at Recology, South Valley, San Benito County. Yeah, we do collect Christmas trees en route. You would put it next to your, your organics bin. We collect it as part of the organics program, and we do suggest that you cut it down to a size three feet or less, and that will allow you to put it kind of upside down into your cart, if possible. But again, if your cart is filled, my cart will be filled. It's filled every week. I'll put, well, I have, I have a fake tree, so I wouldn't put one out, but I would put it next to my cart, and that's the way it works. And then there's also the program with the Boy Scouts. They also have a program that assists residents with picking up Christmas trees, and then that, those are brought to our organics processing center over in Gilroy. They're, they're stopped, they're put into a box at, I still call it the Little League Fields. I guess it's softball as well. They put in a box there and then transferred over to Gilroy from Hollister.
So, but we don't have anything, they don't pick up for flock trees? The flock trees have to be taken to the dump itself?
Yeah, flock trees would be taken to the dumps.
Okay.
I mean...
I just wanted to make that...
Yeah, again, they're not, they're not fully compostable. The flocking won't go through our process.
Yeah, all righty. Just making sure.
All right.
I'll just add, residents do have the twice-a-year quarterly bulky item recycling opportunity. I don't know if that is an acceptable item for them to put at the curb for pickup by Okay, great.
Oh, sure, 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 thank you. Any public comment on, on both staff and committee member announcements?
Good morning. My name's Andy Obertello. I missed the, the... Didn't react fast enough earlier. I'm the new site manager at John Smith landfill. Public comment, I've been a resident for over thirty years in the county, and regarding the flock trees and going to the landfill, if there are companies going out collecting the trees that are not part of those programs and they bring them into the landfill together, there's no way for us to separate them, and they will be going to the landfill if it includes flock trees. So I encourage, if those haulers are going to be coming in to provide those services, to segregate those into maybe making multiple trips, flocked and then natural.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's great. Any other public comment? Okay, we'll go on to presentations.
Great. Next, I'd like to invite up Monica Abonse, our recycling coordinator, who shall present our two thousand and twenty-three Integrated Waste Management Regional Agency accomplishments.
All right. Good morning, local task force. I'll wait until the presentation is, there we go. Okay, perfect. All right, so I'll be starting off with our annual state reports and grants. In August, we submitted our two thousand and twenty-two CalRecycle Electronic Annual Report, or EER for short. This is an extensive report that requires detailed data on all our work done throughout the year. This includes information about diversion rates, collection data, compliance with state recycling mandates, and much more. In November, we also submitted our Form three oh three. This is also an annual report, and this one covers all hazardous and universal waste collected in San Benito. The only hazardous material that's excluded from this report is car oil, as that's reported separately. We also submitted our annual report and grant application for the CalRecycle Oil Payment Program. This is an ongoing program in which funding cycles typically overlap. We submitted our annual report on October eleventh, and the application for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four funding was submitted in June. The application is still under review, but we will likely receive a payment of approximately twenty-one thousand. Another grant program is the City-County Payment Program. This is also an ongoing grant program. This one is specifically focused on various beverage container recycling and reduction initiatives. We submitted our application early this year for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three funding, and were awarded around twenty-five thousand. And then we submitted our annual report for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one funding cycle in March. And as for some additional grants, we had, we were awarded a hundred and eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-six through CalRecycle's SB thirteen eighty-three Local Assistance Grant. This grant has been used to fund several SB thirteen eighty-three expenses, including technical support from consultants, as well as materials such as containers, as well as signage, bags, all that sort of stuff. We've submitted two expenditure reports for this grant, and will be reporting for the final expenditure report next year. And we recently also submitted an application for this same grant, but the most recent cycle. This application was submitted in November, and we are hoping to receive around two hundred and thirty-nine thousand. With this application, we are hoping to add additional staffing for the regional agency to support all of our SB thirteen eighty-three efforts. So crossing our fingers, hopefully we've received the funding. Our Household Hazardous Waste Discretionary Grant, HD thirty-seven, we were awarded a hundred thousand for this grant, and it helps fund various household hazardous waste recycling and education-related initiatives. We submitted our progress report for this year in September, and we'll be submitting a final report around the same time next year. One major highlight from this grant is that we were able to purchase LED bulbs for giveaways. This is to encourage residents just to switch away from fluorescents to LEDs, and we've been able to distribute over eight hundred bulbs so far, and we are continuing our distribution efforts, so we'll see, hopefully we can get that number up higher. And we've also submitted a grant from the Mattress Recycling Council. If we've received this grant, this will help fund various pilot outreach methods aimed at reducing illegal dumping of mattresses, as well as other bulky items throughout the county. And now I will have Frankie come up and give a couple more updates about illegal dumping.
Good morning, local task force and community members. Thank you for being here and giving me the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to give a few updates on illegal dumping program coordination. Really excited about the mattress recycling grant. We should hear back by the end of this month about that one. And another grant that I wanted to mention was the Farm and Ranch Abatement Grant, or it's a cleanup and abatement grant, and that one's through CalRecycle, and we were asking for forty-nine thousand dollars for that one, and we're also expecting to hear back by the end of this month for that one, so fingers crossed on both of those. Hopefully we get some funding to work on some more cleanups. Moving on to some updates that happened earlier on in the year, and you guys are aware of this, but San Benito County Board of Supervisors approved a fine increase from one hundred dollars for the first offense, two fifty for the second, and five hundred for the third offense of illegal dumping violations, to twenty-five hundred dollars, five thousand, and ten thousand dollars for those same violations. And we hope to bring to both cities the option to also increase these fines, and so we're hoping to work with both Hollister and San Juan to address this as well. Moving on into some of the cleanups that we've been working on throughout the year, the first one being the San Benito River Cleanup. This one, a lot of great work has been being done over the few months that it's been going on, and it took place between June and September of this year, between Fourth Street Bridge, technically San Juan Road Bridge, and all the way over to Union Road Bridge within the river. And throughout that cleanup, over thirty-five thousand pounds of abandoned solid waste was removed, over two hundred tires, and over eighteen vehicles were taken out of the river. And these pictures here are showing some of the work that they had to do out there. It's not easy to get some of these vehicles out from where they are. Sometimes they're buried under feet of dirt, and sometimes you start digging and you find other things, too. And so, yeah, it's, a lot of great work has been happening, but there's definitely still more work to be done. The second cleanup that we've been working on is the Salinas-San Juan Grade Road Cleanup, and this one only took place over six days between August and September, but throughout those six days, over thirty thousand pounds of abandoned solid waste was removed, over sixty-five tires, and over fifty appliances and bulky items. And there is still more work to be done out there, but with just those six days of cleanup, that was a lot of waste removed from that property, and so some great work being done out there. Huge thank you to Smith and Enright, who is the cleanup crew that we contracted to conduct some of that work, and they're, they have a great team that, that works together out there on those projects. And last thing there, it's talking about the grants that I mentioned before, but that's just to help fund some of the program development in terms of bringing cameras to the county, doing different signs that contain outreach and education so that residents know of all the services and events that are offered to them, and then just conducting more in-person outreach as well. And so we're hoping to get funding for, for some of those initiatives. And then another exciting thing that we're bringing to the community is an illegal dumping reporting tool for residents, which will help us streamline reports and just keep track of the overall progress of cleanups that happen within the three jurisdictions here. And then it'll also give us kind of an overarching understanding of where the majority of the dumping is happening within the jurisdiction, so it'll help us kind of keep track of hotspots and whatnot. With this tool, we are also developing, we're working with GIS on this, and they have, Renee and his team have been very accommodating with all the edits and different drafts that we've asked for, and so huge thank you to the GIS team on that one. But he's also helping us develop an internal tool that will help us receive reports and kind of just give us oversight on all of them, because there's a lot of different reports that come in, and it's kind of hard to keep track of the progress of, has it been cleaned up yet? Is it in progress, or is it completed? And so this will be very helpful for organization on our end. And then last thing that I wanted to talk about was the program partner surveys that we worked with our solid waste consultants, R three, on developing and conducting, and the goal of these surveys was to make those initial connections with the city and county departments that work on illegal dumping, so that we can have some conversations around how they deal with it, so we can better understand how all the different departments deal with it when it does come across their desk. And all of those meetings and surveys went really well. Just making those connections with the different departments was a success in my eyes, because everybody was very excited that the county and the two cities are thinking about this and looking to address this issue. And so everybody is eager to come together, have these conversations, and work together to address this issue in, across all three jurisdictions in a way that works for everybody. And so the first Illegal Dumping Abatement Coalition meeting is anticipated in February, where we hope to bring all of these departments that we reach out to together, so that we can start having these meetings and learn how we can best address this issue in our counties most efficiently. And that, those are my updates. Any questions? Or is there a section?
Yes, I, I, not so much a question, but as a comment. So who's going to be on this team that's going to meet in February, the legal dumping team?
Coalition, so we reached out to city and county public works, any enforcement agencies that may have a hand in dealing with the enforcement side of things. We also reached out to HHSA, public health, environmental health, and, let's see, the sheriff's office, so yeah, any enforcement agencies.
Okay.
And I'm sure there's a few more that I'm missing, but yes, basically anybody who has a hand in receiving reports, picking up the illegal dumping when it does get passed on, or working on kind of education, outreach, or a community cleanup. So if you guys have any feedback or would like us to get in contact with any other city or county departments, or even community groups for that matter, we are open to that feedback, and we're more than willing to reach out to different community members and groups to connect with them.
And the other thing I wanted to say, particularly on the San Juan Salinas Grade Road, that's been a real problem for a long, long, long time, and thank you for doing that. And, you know, there's not much power up there, so I'm wondering about cameras and stuff and trying to figure that out, but because it's so isolated and because not very many people go there, that's why they dump there, you know? They know they can literally get away with it. So we need to figure out a plan to change that, if possible. I don't know if it is possible, but it might be possible.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah, and to address some of the concerns with the power and stuff, the company that we're looking at going through for the surveillance cameras, they have an option for solar cameras, and so the power might not be as much of an issue as we thought. And then they're also connected to cell service, and so even if there's no Wi-Fi out there, we should be able to get the, the different evidence that we need just sent to us through the cloud and stuff. And so we are developing a program. The company that we're working with is called Epic I O, and many jurisdictions throughout California have been using them to not only service their cameras, but also offer support in terms of like troubleshooting, or if they need to be on-site to help fix some of the maintenance, they can also do that, and so, yeah.
Thank you. Any public comment on this last? Okay, thank, okay.
Actually, can I jump in, Rick? So tires, two hundred tires.
Yeah.
So usually, I know, because going down there a lot, that they were usually piled like right there by the bridge. Is it the same spot?
I know exactly the spot you're talking about. It's right off of Bridge Vale, right on the other side of the Fourth Street Bridge there. That spot is one of the hotspots that we are aware of.
Can I, I just want to throw this out there. I've thought about this for years. It's like, with that many tires, it's a company. So what if we did something like dropped off a tire each company? GPS it?
Something like that might work.
I mean, because, you know what? That's ridiculous. When you go down there and you see that many tires every year, for someone else to dump it, so they don't have to pay to get it done? That's, and you know what? And if we do, oh, go ahead.
I love that idea. We have thought of a few other ideas as well. Feedback from one of our other groups we work with, Cheer, they have given us some insight into the experience they've done in other areas where they've conducted similar cleanups. The tires are often slashed, and so they're slashed, they're taking out the metal rim, is my understanding. Sorry?
It's a bead that runs around.
Right.
That thing, and then, and they're able to get revenue off of that. So it could also be, you know, someone, might be a business, it could also be someone that does projects at home. I know I myself have a neighbor who works on probably ten cars, you know, at a time in an incorporated county every week, and so that GPS might work, but I think cameras and putting where we know the hotspots are is going to be very effective, too.
Yeah, I just, just, I was just throwing it out there. Also, if I can make a comment, the distributed LED eight hundred lights. Also, if I can make a comment, oh, the distributed LED eight-hundred lights. I love how you give us a number. You know, that's, I always, I calculate how many people we have, thinking, how many, that's my mind. The, and, and like the three-oh-three, the annual, and the cow oil, and the city-county stuff. Is it possible next time to get some numbers? Like, to see how much, how many mattresses we did this year compared to last year? To see how we're, we're progressing, and we are combating the San Juan Grade Road? Because that's the only, that's the best tool we're going to have, is, is this outreach for them to be able to take it someplace to dump.
Definitely.
And with that, it's like, you know, so, some people are not allow, not allowed, can't make it to these special events. The, has anyone ever thought about, you know what, if, not just having an event, but you get a, a day pa, a dump pass?
Take a voucher?
Yeah.
Landfill, landfill brick, landfill. Landfill pass.
Landfill pass, yeah. Um, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm just throwing all kinds of ideas out there, because it, it's really sad when you drive around our, our community and people are just dumping. And then, you know, you guys are doing a great job by offering these programs and everything. But I feel like we can always do more and, and better refine our services to the community, whatever department it is.
Yeah, well, I'm happy to work with our landfill operator on the vouchers. We do have funds that can be available this year for, for maybe a pilot of the voucher tickets. We can target certain areas of Hollister, San Juan Batista, and dedicate the amount of that funds to a voucher program, and we'll provide you updates next, next meeting.
That'd be cool. And, and the number thing is, because I'm, I like numbers, it's like, oh, yeah, we're doing better.
I love numbers, too. We do have a lot of data comparing from year to year, so perhaps at the next meeting, where we do a similar annual update, which would be quarter four of 2023, we can, we can provide, sorry, quarter four of 2024, we can provide that.
And when you went out there to the river, Frank, did you, did you guys come across the one where they put the van on top of the other car?
I personally didn't see it.
Oh, that's so funny. So you go out there, and there's a van on top of a car? And both of them are burnt? Someone has way too much time. Because you, it's hard to get out there.
Yeah, we, we have a report of Smith and Enright, they took some pictures while they were out there, and there's some pictures of the, all the vehicles that they had to deal with. So if you guys wanted to see that, I can definitely send that over to you in an email. It's, it's pretty, pretty fun to look at. And also, going back to the tires, I did want to mention, there is a place in town, West Coast Rubber, that will take in tires. I don't know if people just don't know about it, because we do see tires all the time out there, but they will come to your residence and pick it up. It does cost a little bit of money, but there are services available to residents that do need to get rid of some tires available to them. So if they wanted to look into, West Coast Rubber is the name of the, the business.
Thank you.
I just have one more comment to make about these discussions with the riverbed enforcement, the need for cameras. We, I think Frankie touched on this, but we did go to the Board of Supervisors this Tuesday of this week to present and share our updates about our illegal dumping, what are abatement program countywide, some specific county-related only programs. And then at the end, this presentation was, was also done with code enforcement, county code enforcement, the sheriff department. And we did our ask of two new staff positions, that would be county-funded, one for a, a new deputy sheriff, that's a hundred percent focused on public right-of-way investigations, and working very closely with the other staff position we're requesting, which is a code enforcement officer. The, sorry, the sheriff deputy, they would work predominantly in the riverbed to monitor that, so that when we do do cleanups, they're monitoring right after the cleanup, there's a consistent presence, so things aren't accumulating. We're not seeing cars being abandoned for very long periods of time, or allowing them to be burned, and, and things like that. And then having a special presence in our rural roads, since that is where we're seeing most of the large-scale dumping of, of items, and especially in South County, and then, as you know, Selena's Grade Road. So I did want to share that.
Do we have, how many code enforcement officers does the county presently have? Do you have any, do we have any ideas?
We have two positions that were funded. I believe only one is filled at this time, Robin Leland, she is wonderful, very pleasant to work with, but, but only one filled, and they're actively recruiting for, for the other fill. So this would be the third code enforcement officer.
Thank you.
Sorry. I think, just for, for painting the picture, I think there's about two hundred and seventy open cases right now for this one code enforcement officer. So, obviously, there is, there is a big need.
Thank you.
And before we move on to Monica's presentation, I just wanted to make sure that we also acknowledge Recology, our partners since November of two thousand and eighteen. They have really helped us with the cleanups that have been going on. And since our relationship has begun with them, we have seen a lot of progress across all of our programs. And so they've been a tremendous partner for this community and for us as well.
Actually, I think this, this, this meeting here, with all the different partners and everything, it's like, this is one of the good, well, they're all good. This is one of the better meetings. You know, it's really just, it's such a good thing for recycling and our waste, because it's all over. And so this is, yeah, this is, like, I do try to make this meeting.
Well, we have more wonderful information to share today.
Wait, Rick, no, I think it is the best meeting in the county, period, okay? I'm going to just.
You're the chair, I think you're biased.
Okay, go ahead, Catherine.
And we're excited, because every single one, every single person on our IWM team is, is here today to present to you. And I'd like to bring back Monica, who's going to provide some more information about SB thirteen eighty-three.
All right. Okay, so, back to SB thirteen eighty-three. I'll start with our edible food recovery program updates. We conducted outreach to tier-one and tier-two businesses regarding their edible food recovery requirements. We did this through multiple outlets. We sent out emails, Recology sent out bill inserts, environmental health inspections, they helped us by giving out flyers, and a couple other methods as well. So for tier-one businesses, they're required to start their edible food recovery program at the start of this year. Tier ones include businesses such as wholesale food vendors, grocery stores, food distributors, as well as others. So to be compliant, they're required to first be donating all the edible food they have, as well as have an agreement in place with the organization they'll be donating to, and keep records. So this year, we completed our site visits early in the year. They're ta, they're not technically enforceable by twenty-twenty-four, so our site visits were mainly educational. And for tier-two businesses, they're required to start their edible food recovery program at the start of next year, twenty-twenty-four. So, so far, I've done two site visits with environmental health, and will continue to join them on their remaining, on the remaining site visits. For us, the only tier-two businesses we have are schools. Tier twos include things as hotels, educational agencies, large venues, as well as others, but really the only ones that fall within the requirements are schools. And it's, I want to note that these schools are technically only enforceable by the state. So we're, we're trying to help them how we can, and definitely giving them educational resources, but we are not the enforcing agency. And as for additional SB thirteen eighty-three program updates, we have increased our educational outreach for organics recycling to our residents. We've conducted four compost workshops with over fifty-five attendees. And we've also been doing our food scrap outreach. So as of now, we've distributed over seven hundred pails. We have a lot sitting in our storage still, so we're hoping to continue that outreach and get them out to all of our residents. As for commercial organics recycling, we've also increased our outreach and education to businesses. With Recology's help, we're able, we were able to get thirty new businesses to enroll in the organics program. And we've seen an increase in yards serviced per week for organics from two forty to two seventy. And we compared from quarter three from twenty-twenty-two to quarter three of this year. And as for procurement compliance, this is a work in progress. San Benito County is currently in the progress of, currently in the process of updating their purchasing policy to include all the SB thirteen eighty-three paper procurement requirements. And we're hoping to do this as well with the cities. And now I will again pass it on to Catherine, and she's going to speak a little bit about our household hazardous waste.
Hello. The San Benito County Resource Management Agency solicited a request for proposal in October for household hazardous waste services, and, and Advanced Chemical Transport Incorporated, also known as ACT Enviro Incorporated, was selected through this process. We expect, I'm sorry, we anticipate this going to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration at their January sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four board meeting. So we've been working hard developing.
You can tell.
We have. Isn't that a great picture? We've been working hard with, already with ACT Enviro. And some of the services that ACT Enviro will provide include collection, packaging, treatment, storage, transportation, and proper disposal of recyclable and non-reusable household hazardous waste, which we call HHW, and very small quantity generators of hazardous waste for the regional agency at our permanent, at the county's permanent household hazardous waste collection facility located at the John Smith Road landfill. Our household hazardous waste collection events occur at the permanent facility twelve times a year, every third Saturday of the month, from nine AM to twelve PM. Additionally, ACT Enviro will assist, excuse me, will assist us with four off-site, one-day annual HHW collection events held within the county of San Benito to improve access to our residents. This is on top of the monthly events. We are still developing what each event will look like, and when and where they will be held. One of the exciting new items that, that ACT Enviro will bring is that we will now have permanent staffing. So it, we will have, when these events are staffed, they will not be bringing contractors. They will have people who work for ACT Enviro. So we'll have consistent staffing, and we're really excited about that. And also, ACT Enviro will, will also be providing staff, county staff, and some city staff who work with HHW, training, staff training, such as the Hazer eight general site worker, which we call HazWhopper Training, which is required by OSHA. This is a forty-hour training that also requires twenty-four hours of on-the-job training to become certified. I believe we have three of our staff members, Frankie, Monica, and Selena, who have gone through the initial part of this training. And then they will also be offering us the Hazer eight R general site worker HazWhopper Training, which is a refresher course, and it's required by OSHA. And this is an eight-hour yearly refresher course for those who are HazWhopper certified.
Can I interrupt here for a split second? There's another person who's forty-hour HazWhopper trained and certified.
We're going to call on you now that we know.
And thank you. I know ACT very well, and, and, and the nice thing about them is they're a local company, local to Silicon Valley, and I think they'll provide a lot better service than, than the other guys.
So we have, IWM, Integrated Waste Management Staff, held a team-building exercise, and we went out before Thanksgiving in November, and we cleaned up our household hazardous waste site. As you can see, we went, we went out there and we pulled weeds, we raked, we shoveled, we, as you can see in the corner, right-hand side, I believe, maybe your left, bags and bags of just trash. So we just wanted to make sure that we can keep, we can keep it clean, because our residents are coming out there. And Selena actually went out and helped, she just didn't get to get into the picture. But this, but this was a team, team bonding event, and we had a lot of fun. So, oh, I want to point out, if you can see our two household hazardous waste containers right there, the white containers, I want you to see some progression. I'll be, I'll be sharing with you in a minute. So we had had Clean Earth come out and clean the inside of the containers, the floors were getting a little dirty, because we have to have grates down, and so batteries and, and gravel and whatnot is falling onto the bottom of the floor. As you can see, the before picture shows all of the, just how unclean, unclean it is, and then they went in and cleaned it up. So we're really happy for that. And we, at the time that I made this presentation, we had painting of the HHW containers underway. As you can see, they were very dirty, they have been worn by the weather, there is a lot of rust. And we, again, want to have a nice facility for our, our community members to come out to. And we do ask that people stay in their vehicles when they are at the HHW facility, no matter how much, no matter how much experience they have, it's for their safety and the safety of others. If you notice that the employees that are working out there, that are staffing, that are wearing hazmat outfits, and that's for a reason. And so we want to make sure, Chairman Freeman, that you and other community members are safe.
I'd like to see him in a white outfit.
We can make that happen.
I ha, I have one in, in my garage. It's not a problem.
Okay, so, as of last night and this morning, Selena provided me with the day three pictures, we had Hollister Paint Company, we, we went out and we got some bids, and we had Hollister Paint Company come out and clean up, to paint, clean up and paint our, our household hazardous waste containers. And as you can see, it took them three days, and they're doing, I believe they're doing some touch-up work right now as we speak. But they have done a, a really nice job, and we're really proud. So next steps is we have to go get the stickers and have them put up again, and we just really want to make, we have some ideas we'll share with you in the future of some things that we want to do with the containers. Next, I'd like to bring up Monica.
All right, I have a couple more slides for you guys. So now I want to talk about some of the events that we've had this year. So we had two recycle days this year. This was funded, or partially funded through our HD thirty-seven grant that I spoke a little bit about earlier. So the first one was held on May twentieth, and at this event, we accepted e-waste, fluorescent bulbs, batteries, and we're giving away the LED light bulbs. This event was held at Brigantino Park, and we had sixty-eight participants and were able to collect seven hundred and fifty pounds of bulbs, as well as two thousand six hundred and forty pounds of e-waste. And the second event was held on November fourth. This event was held over at the Veterans Memorial Park. And at this event, we were collecting batteries, paint, mattresses, mercury, thermostats, and again, we're giving away the LED light bulbs. This event was a huge success. We had two hundred and eighty-three participants, we collected a hundred and nine mattresses, thirty-one thousand pounds of paint, this included latex and oil-based paints. And a program that we were able to do with the, the company who picked up the paint was a reuse program of the paint, so we did, we gave away sixty-point-five gallons of paint for reuse. This event was advertised through all of our regular advertising platforms, as well as through a postcard that was mailed out county, countywide. The postcard proved to be highly successful, and we definitely plan on using this method of outreach in the future. And our Earth Day Celebration, this was another event we had earlier in the year. This one was held in downtown Hollister. We had over thirty booths, as well as other attractions, as you can see here, we had hula dancers and a couple other events going on. We had over five hundred people attend the event. This is our largest Earth Day that we've had to date, and at the event, we were also able to honor the Recology Art Poster Contest winners. They got a little gift baggie, and were also presented with certificates from a couple of our elected officials. So overall, it was a great event, and we're already excited to be, start planning next year's event. And just for a couple extra additional accomplishments, we are fully staffed, and we are growing our team with the help of Lori. We've, our intern, we've substantially increased our program outreach, and we're also hoping to add new positions to our team and continue to grow. We've also, give me one second. We've also grown our partnerships with several organizations in our community through our outreach events that we've done. This year, we participated at events like Kids at the Park, the Farmer's Market, Youth Expo. With the help of our partners, we were, we were able to put together a school edutainment menu, and overall, just have really increased our presence out in the. menu, um, and overall, just have really increased our presence out in the community. Uh, we've also, well, the partners that we've had, some of them have been Public Health, Water Resource Association, Youth Alliance, Elections Department, Chamber of Commerce, many, many organizations that we've worked with, and we are hoping to continue these partnerships into the new year. Um, and now I'm just gonna let Lori talk a little bit about her internship and her experience working with us.
I wanted to come up and just say a few words. Um, working in this department under my internship has been very eye-opening, seeing all of the resources this county and the department has to offer, and just how impactful outreach can be. Um, I have, um, helped out with over twenty events over my past seven months here, um, and I plan to continue to work for this department into the next year and help out any way that I can, um, to try to help the county waste less and reuse more. Thank you.
Twenty in seven months?
And that completes our announcements for this year.
Thank you. Yes. Oh, thank you. Pu, public comment from, from Chambers. Anybody on Zoom?
No public comment.
Thank you. Okay. Catherine, you, are you, you got more?
Yes, we do. We, we do have more for you. Next, I'd like to bring up Michael Kelly with, he's the General Manager of Recology for Recology's Quarterly Updates.
Am I responsible for pushing that button? I'm good? Sorry about that. I'm Mike Kelly. I'm the General Manager, uh, at Recology. Um, I'm gonna give you a brief update. Uh, this is a summary of, of the report that we handed in. We turn in a quarterly report, uh, quartered. Uh, so, uh, move to the next slide. Oh, you just told me to have to push it up. Okay. Nope, I'm good now that I know where it is. So, I apologize for that delay. Want to give you the update on the diversion numbers for, for the, the J, the joint, did I call it JPA? Okay, JPA. Hollister, there, and this is all customer types, not just residential or commercial or, or debris box. This is all customer types. And again, this is net of any contamination, so there's a deduction. So what we deliver to the, to the processing centers is reduced by any contamination. So these are the net numbers here. Um, so for Hollister, we're at thirty-seven-point-nine-six percent. San Juan Batista is at fifty-one-point-one-two percent. Unincorporated San Benito County is at thirty-three-point-two-seven percent. And overall, uh, JPA-wide, we are at thirty-six-point-five-eight percent. And just so you're aware of numbers, um, the total diverted tons is approximately four thousand tons diverted, uh, for, for Q three. Going on to the, oh, that's me again. Okay, so, this is Q, Q three highlights. That, that header did not get corrected, and, and this is highlights of, of actions. And this is in participation with the IWM as well, partnership. So again, with, with, with their help, we were able to, um, have eighty-seven site visits during the quarter, um, specifically to this quarter, for new and, uh, increased organic customers. And as described earlier, um, we assisted with the create, uh, assisted with, uh, creating and mailing out the edible food donation flyers. Um, as a side note, the member agency departments, that's, um, only the, the governmental departments here, uh, most are in the sixty to seventy percent diversion range, and that's not based on tons, that's based on volumes, yards and, um, and gallons. But again, sixty to seventy percent diversion is, is a great number. And again, working with, in partnership with the IWM, uh, continuing to promote early compliance with SB thirteen eighty-three. Um, and then, and then as far as in-kind services, um, last quarter, we donated approximately nine thousand dollars of in-kind services, and this includes, um, not only monetary donations, but services. Generally, the most, most of that is, is usually services, um, but again, the value of approximately nine thousand dollars. And last but not least, I'd like to introduce some new Way Zero specialists that we have for San Benito County. And the great news is, is, and I, I realize this, but didn't think about it till just now, but they also have ties to Hollister and San Benito County. So that, that's great. So, uh, want to introduce Adrian Saugun, if you can stand. Uh, again, he's a Hollister native. Um, he's partnered with us before on some, on some events. Um, so, uh, we, we were introduced to him early, and, and this position opened up, and he's a great fit. And then Valeria Sandoval, if you can please, she, again, some Hollister ties. She actually, uh, has sixteen years of industry experience, believe it or not, and she started with, uh, Recology in Gilroy Morgan Hill as part of the, the thirteen eighty-three compliance that, that they're already, um, required to perform. So she started over there, and then when this position opened up, she came over here. And that is it. Uh, does anyone have any questions?
I would like to say the, um, this is so awesome. It's like, you know, so many staff positions are being filled. It's like, if you're building a, a good team here, it's, you could feel the, the gelling going on, and it's like, really cool.
Thank you. I, um, I enjoy working with this team. Haven't worked with you yet, but, um, but again, um, it, it is a good partnership. If we do try to work together and, and do the best we can to, to, to divert the waste and get, get, get these things going to the right places.
I, I, I think you guys really, it's so positive because you guys are always talking so much trash.
It's in our nature.
Following up with that, I'd, I'd like to thank your, your entire, you especially, but your entire company for thinking ahead and having an organics recycling spot near us. I mean, it's in Santa Clara County, but it's near us, so we can access it. So compliance with thirteen eighty-three, which is a, a critical state mandate, is, is at least possible, if not already there. Yeah.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we were fortunate. And that, that was a closed landfill too. So, so we were able to reuse a landfill. So, very, very possible.
Good job.
All right, thank you.
Yes. Public comment, please.
No public comment.
Thank you. Let's see, go first. Do we have anything else in, um, um, presentations for agency expenditures? Is that up next?
That's up next, yes. Good morning, local task force members. As part of our Integrated Waste Management Cost Sharing Agreement between the county and the cities, the local task force here is to review expenditures quarterly and make recommendations. We do not have before you today a document of detailed expenditures for this meeting nor for the prior LTF meetings since this committee has reconvened. But we are actively working on a document, a template, and then we'll provide that at the next LTF meeting in quarter one of twenty twenty-five, sorry, twenty twenty-four. That, that document will provide much more detail and will show the quarter three and quarter four expenditures, um, actual expenditures, which will better aid you to provide feedback as well as provide the public and you with, um, further program transparency. For now, we are providing these two, these details. Approximately one-point-four million was approved for the Integrated Waste Management Regional Agency Budget, which includes regional agency programs, services and supply costs, staff and benefit costs. And to clarify, this does not include any of the landfill costs or revenue, nor county-only specific solid waste programs or revenue, which is accounted for in, in separate funds, and that is approved by our Board of Supervisors only. Actual expenses processed to date are two-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-and-forty-two dollars. We are slightly behind on processing November invoices, but will soon be up to speed thanks to, uh, the hiring of Esmeralda, once we get her trained. Specifically, we have, um, in services, supplies, and other charges, a hundred-and-sixteen-thousand and, um, and a hundred-and-thirty-three dollars, salaring benefits, a hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand and nine-hundred-nine dollars. As for revenue, four-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-two-hundred was budgeted and is anticipated, if not already received, and this revenue is deducted from any grant or related program expenditures associated with that revenue. So the, the counties and the city would not be billed for these costs, it would be deducted. That concludes our expenditures for today, our update, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Um, thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm good with it. Thank you for the report. Any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. Okay, moving on to action items. Item number four, or five, six, actually, action items.
So this is, uh, the ongoing conversation that we've had regarding the non-exclusive franchise agreement moving towards a permit process. As, um, and I just wanted to go, and I'm going to ask Rose Radford with R three R Consultant to come in on one of the slides for her, to share her expertise and her knowledge and, and information that she, that is vital for you to hear. And, uh, so we have, for the non-exclusive franchise agreement, uh, Recology is the exclusive, Recology San Benito County is the exclusive franchise. They were awarded the ten, a ten-year contract beginning in November of nineteen, of two-thousand-and-eighteen. And we have three service areas, which is the mandatory service area, which includes parts of Aromas, Aromas, parts of the county, the, uh, the city of San Batista, and the city of Hollister. Then we have the voluntary service area, which is service upon request, so that they don't need to have mandatory service at this time. And then we have the discretionary service area, which is service at Recology's discretion. This non-exclusive, this exclusive franchise does not include roll-off dumpster services. The non-exclusive franchise, uh, covers more of the voluntary service area and discretionary service areas, construction and demolition, debris collection, the temporary roll-off or debris box services, and ongoing and regular debris box services, and that would be within also the mandatory service area for the roll-offs and debris box. The current NIFA process between the county and the cities is to monitor solid waste collection haulers. This has occurred since before all of IWM staff members have been, uh, working with, and probably your time, uh, on serving on your councils. And, um, our goal with this MOU between the IWM regional agency members is to formalize our relationship and to streamline the overall processes for staff and for the haulers, and also to comply with AB nine-three-nine and then, and SB thirteen eighty-three regulations and state reporting. These mandates require all of California jurisdictions to implement organics recycling programs, business and residential recycling programs, and meet mandatory diversion from landfill or face potential compliance schedules and/or fines. And specifically, SB thirteen eighty-three requires a fifty percent reduction in landfill disposal of organics waste by twenty twenty and seventy-five percent reduction by twenty-twenty-five. The effort to move away from an agreement and towards permitting process has been evolving since the beginning of twenty twenty-two to the present, and our, although we have a, a rule exemption that will be expiring, and as you know, with integrated waste management, we, we like, we are working hard to make sure that we are complying as that rule exemption is going away, and that's why we've been bringing this forward to you. So this is a map of the discretionary area, the mandatory area, and the voluntary area. Do I have any questions about this map? You guys have seen it a few times? Okay. So the Cal, the county is the lead agency for the exclusive franchise contract oversight. The city's collection occurs by exclusive franchise, um, due to mand, to the mandatory service area, and the NIFA permit would be more for roll-off collection and for their business residents. So I'd like to call upon Rose Radford with R three to present this portion of the presentation.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, perfect. All right. Thanks for having me this morning. And, uh, yes, I know that, uh, this group has heard, I think, a lot about the NIFA process. We do want to make sure this, uh, to communicate clearly about what you're doing today, which is really, uh, we're requesting that you, uh, recommend that the city councils and, uh, county Board of Directors, uh, adopt the, uh, memorandum of understanding that, as Catherine mentioned, uh, formalizes the existing relationship between the cities and the counties, and designates, uh, the county as the responsible party for administration over the, um, to-be permit process. So this is a transition from NIFA to permits, and it also, uh, involves a modernization of a number of the permit terms. Without being exhaustive about each of the details of what the permit would look like, as Catherine mentioned, it really is a standardization and an overhaul of the, of the existing, uh, NIFA permit, and it's really necessary because the county is not receiving some of the reporting that the state is requiring. And it, it's gonna tighten up a few of the other, uh, requirements as well. Because we're transitioning from NIFA, the cities and the county will also need to, uh, update the sections of their code that refer to the NIFA process and transition that essentially into either a franchise or a permit. We're just adding or a permit to that language. And I thi, I think that's what I had for today.
Thank you, Rose. So next, we have our timeline. We've updated it again, and we just wanted to, uh, show the progress that we've been making since June sixteenth of twenty twenty-two, where we have been providing the LTF with, with constant updates regarding this process. And if you noticed, um, along with, attached to the agenda for this item is a letter to the haulers. So we did send that letter out on Friday, uh, to let the haulers know that we would be having this meeting, and they were welcome to come and attend and provide any public comment if they had any. We emailed this letter, and we also mailed the letter physically to their location. And so next, um, we will be calling each of the haulers regarding any upcoming, uh, city council and county Board of Supervisors meeting, and letting them know updates and seeking any feedback. We will be providing educational workshops to them. Our target date is for March of twenty twenty-four for these workshops. We are asking you to go back to your respective bodies, um, with this, with the, the, um, MOU and the code revisions, um, for approval, and we are, we will also be bringing this to the county, and we're hoping to have this done in the months of January and February of twenty twenty-four. And so this is more of what will be going on. We will be working with the haulers directly. We'll be making sure that they are educated and that they understand what's going on. We'll be sending out termination letters in March, and we'll be, um, providing the education and updating all of our webpages. Once this gets approved, we'll be updating all of our webpages and information so that we are being very transparent about the process, and we are, our goal date is July first of twenty twenty-four to have this new permit go into effect. We are working with the, with your city managers as well. We have had meetings with them and your legal councils, and we've, um, sought feedback from them on this, and, um, they have provided information, and, and you can get updates from. and you can get updates from your city managers as well. Any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. I just have one quick question. Will the permit, will be kind of like a blanket permit? So each hauler will buy one for a year or something like that? Is that the plan? Or are they going to get a permit each time they go to the landfill?
No, it would be a permit that is administered by the county, and it would renew automatically every year. There is going to be a permit fee that has not yet been determined. We're working with county council and figuring out what would be an appropriate fee to cover staff time.
So it would be a yearly thing, and they wouldn't have to do it each trip to the landfill?
No, no. They do need to, part of the county code is to, at all times, provide proof of, why am I forgetting it? Proof of, proof of origin, origin waste documentation. Thank you. Yeah. So that would be required.
Thank you. Okay. Any public comment?
We do have one on Zoom.
Yes.
Christina, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you, Chairman Freeman and Integrated Waste Management. Board members and staff members, Christina Chavez White, on behalf of the San Benito County Board of Supervisors, I'm sorry, San Benito County Business Council. I was just wanting to ascertain and ensure that these procurement policies ensure provisions that local preference are included per the code sections of the city and the county. I believe the county is 10%, the city is 5%. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comment in the chambers here?
No more public comment.
Thank you. Okay, going on to item seven.
We are seeking action on this item. While the LTF does not have the authority to approve these documents, they do need to go before the cities, for the code revisions, for the MOU adoption. So we're seeking approval of the, maybe Rose can jump in. I'm forgetting the new term we're using. Approve.
Resolution? Is that it?
No, not quite. Rose, are you there?
Yeah. So we're asking you to recommend to the city councils and county board of directors to adopt in substantially the same form the documents that were attached to your agenda packet.
Thank you. Mayor, I have a motion, Rick.
So moved to approve.
Okay, I'll second it. Rick, you and I are both in favor?
Yes.
Yes. It's passed.
Thank you.
Okay. Now on to item number seven, discussion for the meeting dates of next first quarter of 2024.
So typically, we are having our, we have four quarters, and so it would be in March, June, September, and December. And so we're just asking if we could set the first meeting in March, and if we can have some discussion, if you can provide us with any direction or discussion on this item.
What? Okay. I'm really happy with the, what is it, the second Thursday of?
So we've been typically, this year, we've had it on the third Thursday of the month, except for this month because of the holidays.
I'm happy with either the second or the third Thursday of each month. I think that would work well. At 10:00 AM, this place, works well.
I'll show up.
So if we could get a motion to approve the first three meetings of the year, the third month, the third Thursday, and then the fourth month, December, the second Thursday at 10:00 AM.
Okay, so we already have a motion on the floor, and I will second it. And Rick, do you approve?
Approve.
I do, too. It's passed.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number eight is this meeting is adjourned at 11:13. Thank you.
Now I don't want to leave.
You can stay, Rick.
No.